Welcome everyone to the regular Planning Commission meeting of February 3rd, 2021. Could we please have a roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pastor?
Present.
Commissioner Raskin?
Here.
Commissioner Reese?
Here.
And Chair Landris?
Forgot me. You forgot Lambert.
Chair and Commissioner Lambert.
I'm really here, honestly.
You're here. Wait, Leslie, tell them you're here, okay? We should make sure.
I'm here.
Fantastic. Let us go on to the Planning Directors' report.
Good evening, Commission. Let's see, coming up at our next meeting on February 17th, we have a resolution of intention for the ARB restructuring process. We have a DR permit variance and tract map for a project at 1665 Appian Way, alcohol CUP at A28 Pico, and then discussions on a new emergency IZO to retain potential housing sites, pending completion of the housing element update. So this is something that's going to council later in the month, but we wanted to stop by the Commission and get your input. March 3rd, 1401 Santa Monica Boulevard Tesla Charging Station. And then March 16th and 17th is when we've scheduled the Housing Element Update Draft Concept. So have those back-to-back meetings scheduled for March 16th and 17th. City Council Actions on January 26th was the second reading of the Promenade Fast Food Ordinance and also mid-year budget review. And then upcoming at City Council on February 9th, Council will get a presentation on the Third Street Promenade Stabilization and Economic Vitality Plan. So long title, but basically that is looking at the, it's a bit of an offshoot from Promenade 3.0 that the Commission has been involved in, but this effort is focused specifically on the uses and what's happening in the buildings on the promenade, looking to make sure that, you know, we are in line in terms of our ordinances and what's allowed, to make sure that we're allowing and encouraging the kinds of uses that hopefully will be coming to the promenade as things start to get back to normal and economic development and recovery kick in. On the Housing Element Update, February 18th, Final Stability Technical Working Group. The 19th is the Final Production Technical Working Group. And then Sustainable Committee, these grants have been submitted for the ADU Accelerator and also Objective Design Standards in Bergamot. So trying to get some grants to accomplish those efforts. Also, in addition to what's on the slide, I wanted to, I just mentioned, I think Commissioner Lambert raised a question earlier in the day about the NMS properties that have been put on the market. So you may have seen something in the newspaper, but basically they've, they're marketing 23 of their properties in Santa Monica. So of those 23, 20 are in the downtown. Two are in the Bergamot area, one is on Santa Monica Boulevard in Yale. Of the 23, 21 are entitled. That means they either have their administrative approval, development review permit, the development agreement, whatever the appropriate permit is, but they are entitled. The other two properties, we have not received applications on. So whoever the new owner is would bring those forward. And I just mentioned it because I want to make sure the Commission and everyone knows that the staff is paying close attention to this effort underway by NMS. And because some of the properties are reliant on other properties in terms of where the affordable housing is to be located, there's also issues with some of the properties that were part of the fire station swap where there's parking obligations. I know some of you remember those discussions and permits. So we are, we are looking closely at this. And also, the other point is, you know, there are other NMS properties, existing buildings and the one that they have under construction at Colorado and Lincoln where Denny's used to be. And so those existing properties and the one under construction is not part of the 23 property sale. So all, all 23 of the ones that are on the market are projects that have not yet been developed. And happy to answer any questions. I see Commissioner Lambert.
I see Lambert, yep.
David, the reason I asked that question, I think I put it in the question, is that the list I have of the inventory of NMS properties has about 1,600 units entitled, a little more than 1,600. And of those, 30% about are affordable. So my question to you is whether you were including those projects, I assume you are, in your site inventory.
Yeah, I'll let Jing go into detail on that. But, and I actually came up with about 1370 in terms of the entitled projects, in terms of the number of units. But I think the, the other thing to keep in mind is, you know, while these properties are entitled and it's certainly an attractive, you know, option to buy an entitled property. So it may be that the new owner moves forward with these. There also is a possibility that, you know, they might look at some of these properties and come back with different projects that could have, you know, more or fewer units. So just because these are entitled as they are, doesn't necessarily mean that that's what a new owner would build. So we have to keep that in mind too. But I'll let Jing answer in terms of how we've factored the approved projects into the mix of the housing element.
Can I just add something to my question? I mean, it just seems logical so that we, I mean, because we're looking at upzoning clearly somewhere. If we can actually count, we can count somewhat. I mean, I know they're not certain, but there's more.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, Commissioner, in the interest of time, we actually have a standing item related to the housing element. So could we potentially leave questions about the substance of the housing element to that item?
Well, David brought it up, so.
I understand, but brought it up in the context of scheduling updates, I think, more than in the context of.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, okay, are there other questions? And I just wanted to note, because this came up today, that on February, on, I believe, Jing, correct me if I'm wrong, February 17th, we will also be given the opportunity to discuss budget priorities for planning.
Yes, that's right. That'll be on your next, yeah. You just figured that out this afternoon, so didn't quite make it up.
Great. Before we move to Planning Commissioner announcements, let me ask ahead of the rest of the agenda. I will have more to say about this, but Alisa will be chairing the back half of the meeting. Could we bring 10A up to, up ahead of item 9A?
Sure.
Is there a motion to do that?
I move.
Well, can I, can I ask for a substitute motion? Can we move up 10A, 11, and 12? Shouldn't we be moving up everything? Do we have anyone for public input?
No, we don't have any callers registered for public input tonight.
Okay, so let's move 10, let's move, let's move 10A. Let's move items 10 through, let's move item, well, we could move 13 up and then just go home. Wait, we're already home.
Let's move to the chairman now.
All right, let's do, let's do 10 through 12. We'll do 10 through 12 before, not before item 9. Is that so moved?
Add a small motion.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
I didn't hear, thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Can I just ask a quick question? Did you ask the people involved in item 9A if they're okay with waiting for this? Or do we not care?
We.
Why are we doing this? Did I miss something?
We're doing this because Sean is recusing himself for 9A. And so the idea is just to get through everything else before he recuses himself.
Oh, recuse. I missed the recuse word. Okay, I understand completely now.
Okay, so this is a motion to move items 10A through 12 ahead of 9A. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Landris?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay. So are there any Planning Commissioner announcement? I will, I will just announce that I attended the, the missing middle housing session that Commissioner Pastor told us about was excellent. And there is actually a recording. So if anyone is interested in watching that, I'm happy to send the recording over. I think Alisa may have it as well. So worth, worth watching in bits. And we'll come, and I'll have somebody say in the housing element item. Okay, seeing no other comments. Here we go with the boilerplate. Please note, tonight's procedures for public comment, we accepted oral public comment by phone through the pre-registration system. Noted on the agenda. Registration for oral comment closed at 3:30 PM today. And let me verify with Melissa, did we receive any registrations?
There are no registrations for any items tonight.
Okay, so written comments, so, so this, the next part is not relevant. Written comments received up until noon today, including two late comments that were received shortly before noon today, have been read by the Commission. Comments received after 12:00 PM today will be considered part of the record of proceedings, but will not be posted online with the Planning Commission's agenda, might not reviewed by the, be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and will not be read aloud during public comment during the meeting. Again, I'm always asked to state the limitations on moderator chat. Moderator chat function in blue jeans is for technical help from administrative staff only. It is not for public comment. The Commission cannot see the chat and comments will not be forwarded to the Commission or entered into the record. With that, we have neither minutes nor stowers to approve. Let us go to the consent calendar. Item 8A, 1311 to 1313 Third Street, 302 Arizona Avenue, 20 ENT 0314 Vesting Tentative Tract. Parcel map number 83173. Are there any expertes?
Yeah, I have an experte. I spoke briefly yesterday with Spencer Calick, who is the applicant's legal counsel. And we didn't actually really discuss anything substantive, but he did mention to me that he was representing the client on the project.
Okay. Any other, I don't see any other expertes. Does anyone want to pull this from the consent calendar? Or can we move the consent?
Let's move it.
Let's move it.
I think that is a motion, okay. Moved by Commissioner Pastor, seconded by?
Leslie.
Great, Commissioner Lambert, who is here, so here.
I'm here.
She's here. Let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Landris?
Yes. Okay, so now let us go to item 10A. Let's go back to the questions that Commissioner Lambert was asking to start.
Let me, let me finish what I was going to say. I have a copy of the NMS portfolio. And when I added up the entitled units and I came up with over 1,600, and if they became, well, there's 1,300 or 1,600, the point remains. And of those, about 400 some odd are affordable because they're part of the inclusion area program. And, and we have several hundred other entitled units in the pipeline. I don't want to include them, but they exist. So my question, doesn't it make sense? Because we're clearly looking at an upzoning strategy somewhere. That if we can actually start out the sixth cycle with 2,000 entitled units, that would be a giant step forward from the standpoint of the site inventory.
Right, so, so the way, like, what gets included in the sites inventory is, you know, sites that are expected to have their permits issued after July 1 of this year. So to the extent, most of these are just, you know, have been approved. They haven't, some of, most of them haven't even been through design review or anything. They are included in the sites inventory as pending projects. I know there's a lot of interest in it. We are working through, the last piece of data we had was to verify the affordable levels of each of the proposals because it's easy when we know that there's a deed restriction. But however, we have a lot of pending projects where it's proposal. So we had to look individually at every single set of plans for about 80 projects to pull that data out. I think we just kind of finished that review today. So I think at your next meeting, we should have a good sense as to what is in the pipeline by income level. You know, so we have a sense as to what, what we can chip away at from the RENA that's been allocated.
I assume then you're looking at all the entitled projects? Like, do you want an Ocean Avenue and Ocean Side Walk?
Yes, yeah, it would include all, all projects that are approved. And all projects were basically using January 1, 2020, as long as they had been in plan check before then. It's assumed they would have pulled their building permit or have her ready to issue by July of this year. Those submitted after then, more than likely would have their permits issued, you know, past July of this year. So that's kind of the assumption.
Okay, but we have no idea when those entitled units will actually pull permits. We just know that sometime during the sixth cycle.
We don't know. Yeah, yeah, we, because we, we base it off on, we looked at a survey of projects, how long it takes to get through plan check. And it was on average in that sort of, you know, 12 to 18 months-ish.
Right.
You know, depending on the kind of project. So we felt comfortable with that sort of assumption.
Well, some of those entitlements, it's taken 10 years to get those entitlements. Okay, I probably have more to say, but that's all. Thank you, Sean.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did you?
Yeah.
Just following up on that, following up on that. Sorry, did you say how, how many already entitled units you think we have?
I had 1,600.
Yeah, well, go on, Jing.
No, but not just NMS. I'm just saying.
No, no, yeah, in total, yeah, we.
For all properties.
We are working on verifying all those numbers because like I said, we had to go back just to double check across all of the plans. So we should have it at your next meeting. We will have that number.
Okay.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi, who had his star turn at the Democratic Club a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I recorded it.
Okay. So this is a question for Jing. Do you, am I understanding that we are keeping this strictly to, in our housing elements, strictly to permitted projects? The projects that are actually built are irrelevant, whether they were built a year ago or would be built from five years, five years hence. They're not going to be counted. Because I noticed in the last cycle, in the presentation by the city, where they said that we had built or permitted something like 2,500, they had mixed permitted and built in that presentation and that's, that slide on the deck. But now we're going away strictly from construction and we're going only into permitting or permissible projects. Is that correct?
So to clarify, I think the slide you're talking about is kind of like, how did we do in the fifth cycle? So it has always been that in terms of what counts towards RENA, it's, you know, what, the building permit issuance, actually. And there was a little bit of a shift, maybe a couple, like, maybe a cycle or two ago, in terms of how that was counted. What was on the slide, what we provided was also kind of looking ahead at what was pending, at what was known at the time. That's not because it was counted towards like the RENA compliance. It was just to give people a sort of preview of like what might be in the hopper because it's sort of point in time data. So what we are counting is, yeah, it has to have, you know, a building permit issued. So the likelihood of that happening. So that, that's what's being counted. So, you know, when we look at projects that have their planning entitlements, but, you know, they're not in plan check yet, you know, as of today, right? Like, not, not possible, you know, for them to, to have a building permit issued by July. So those would push towards, like, counting towards the sixth cycle. So that's, that's basically, what has to be building permit issuance is the threshold that we're using.
Okay, so as of right now, technically, we could issue a report of how well we did in the last cycle, in the fifth cycle. Is that accurate?
Yeah, we, we actually have to, our next progress report to HCD is due April 1. So we're grabbing all of that data right now.
And when will we get, when will we understand how we did?
Well, yeah, we will have, and again, it's, it's a point in time, you know, as of these months. So by, at your next meeting, we should have the accurate data on what has been permitted, what has been, you know, approved not yet in plan check. And that's in plan check and it would count towards like fifth and sixth cycle. So we should have that understanding.
Okay. The last question I have is, can we see how well we did guessing into the suitable sites in the last cycle? How many of our buildings and/or units were built on suitable cycles in the last cycle, on suitable sites, compared to the guessing that we had done on those, whatever it was, 70-odd cycle, 70-odd sites? In other words, how good was our crystal ball, let's say?
How many sites turned over in the last Suitable Sites Inventory? Is that the question you're asking?
Yes. How many, how many other sites that weren't on the inventory actually became permitted?
Yeah. That's, that would not, that's not hard to get. Yeah, we will have that information.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments on this item? Have the, any updates from either of the technical committees? Ellis, were you at the last, you were at the last, yes. We'll go to Commissioner Raskin and then Commissioner Lambert.
Yeah, the Housing Sustainability Preservation Group met. This was last week.
I don't remember. I don't remember what day it was.
Yeah, and we're meeting again on February 18th. And the substance of the last meeting really focused on, on programs designed to facilitate and accomplish the goals of providing some stability. And there was quite a robust discussion. Chair Landris, I don't know if you want to say more specifically. But yeah, I would just say quickly that, you know, we continue to welcome community feedback, you know, even from people who can't attend the working groups on, on these programs and to the extent that the public has comments, to please submit those.
I'll, I'll comment at the end. Commissioner Lambert?
I just want to say I've not been attending, but I plan to attend the one on the 19th, Jing. So I assume I'm still on the email list.
I believe you are, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Pastor?
I attended the Production Subcommittee, the last one. I can't remember the date, but I, it was very productive, no pun intended. And staff came back to us with some of the potential assumptions for the fiscal analysis. And we discussed those and went through those. And I think that was very, very helpful to do that. And, yeah, that's about all I have.
Now, I just have a couple of things. One is on the Technical Committee for Housing Preservation. We, I, I continue to be struck by just the, the breadth of the programs and the scope of the challenges that we face in terms of housing affordability and coming waves of evictions that we are, you know, sort of trying to stand against the tide that is, that, that very, very likely could overwhelm many vulnerable folks in our community. And I think it's going to be important, I said it in the meeting, and I'll say it again here. I really think it's important for us to try to quantify as best we can how our dollars are actually yielding results. And where, so that we can understand what's within our capacity to support over the next decade based on the dollars we expect to have available to us from our own resources, tax base, the property tax transfer, things like that. And then, and then what we, you know, what the best use of those dollars are. I think there, there was robust discussion about a wide range of programs. I think the more we know about what we can bring, that sets us up very well to be able to communicate clearly, frankly, to this, you know, to, to the public and also to the state about what, what is, what is possible for us and what will very, very clearly be in need for additional resources and, and potentially additional legislation from the state to facilitate both the protection and preservation of existing housing, by which I mean keeping people in their homes and the production of affordable housing. Then the second point is, from that APA seminar, which I thought was pretty good, there were two takeaways that I, that I thought were worth passing on. One was, and this was focused on missing middle housing, which had a lot to do with housing sub, sort of subdivisions, increasing density on parcels without necessarily increasing the, the buildable envelope. If folks saw the presentation at the Den Club, this is the two images of the same house, one of which was a, you know, a single-family 6,000-square-foot home and the other was a multifamily residence. And you could pretty much not tell them apart. So what I, what I thought was interesting about that type of housing from the workshop was that does, that housing, the success of that housing really depends on the walkability of the neighborhood in which it's placed. And so the recommendation was to look, that to define a suitable site for that type of housing as neighborhoods that are very clearly walkable to services and activities within a radius. However, we define that radius. And then the second point was that, in response to a couple of questions about affordability, was that those types of housing units yield affordable units when you get to six or seven of them, not at a lower number. So, you know, I think that puts a kind of a constraint on the type of missing middle housing that might be possible to think about for this future housing element, given the sort of upside-down nature of our RENA numbers that are heavily targeting affordable units. And so I thought those two parameters were helpful to, to report out. One, the walkability question, and the other, the fact that this really won't move our RENA scores on other grounds until you can put maybe six or seven units on a parcel, which of course limits the number of parcels that would be eligible for this type of housing. But I, I think it was worth mentioning.
Sean, I have a question about that. Because I've been back and forth, as you know, with many people on density. And when, when you say that a six- or seven-unit project would, it would enhance affordability for the missing middle or whomever. That, I mean, I've never been comfortable with the broad brush use of numbers like that because land values vary so much.
And that was the basis of the question to the speaker.
Yeah, so, I mean, it just, it's really hard to translate that to Santa Monica's real estate market.
Well, no, that was the question to the speaker. I mean, I asked the question, as did a couple of other people, ask about, look, we're in hot coastal cities with very high land values. At what point does it start? So basically, the idea is that at six or seven units, you could require that one or two of those units be affordable units, right? It was, it was, it was about below-market rate units. It was about the formal question of, could you put multiple units and require and yield a below-market rate unit alongside market rate unit? And the number was, if you're not talking six or seven units, the answer is no. Right, so.
The definition of below-market rate is a subjective one, relative.
No, I mean an AMI unit, like a 100% AMI or an 80% AMI.
I always question that, particularly north of Montana.
Okay. But those were the, those were the two issues that there are constraints. I mean, I think we're, we're on the same page about this, about the, that, that, this model of housing will, is, how do I put this? This model of housing is interesting. Its applicability to our situation is constrained. And so I was essentially reporting the two constraints that I thought were most interesting, which is walkability and affordability. So. which is walkability and, um, and affordability. So, uh, to put that, to put that another way.
Okay.
Other, other thoughts on this item before we move on? Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yeah, I was actually interested in your comments at the beginning of your, uh, last round, so to speak. Uh, and that you were suggesting that we should take a financial approach to this, see how much money is available, uh, to deploy in terms of increasing affordability. Uh, and then, and I totally agree with that. And that was actually part of the Democratic Club presentation, where everyone agreed the problem was money. The problem was not construction. The problem was not political will. It was definitely money. And that being the case, um, how much of the money that we might be getting from the building fees, of the INLU fees and from the sales tax and from any other source, uh, is directly and only applicable to new construction or purchase of existing buildings and converting them? And how much of that could be redirected to rental support? To keep people in their homes while we get through the eviction tsunami that we're headed toward? And, and that it would be more valuable in my mind to present more rent subsidies. Uh, and it may feel like, oh, that's just no property owner left behind, but it's actually allows people to stay in their homes, which is a very valuable thing to do at this time. And, uh, but it would, it would mean basically reducing our construction, our 7,000 new units to keep, you know, X thousand of people still in their own homes. And I don't know where that discussion should happen, whether it should happen in this group, whether it should happen at the council level or housing level.
Yeah, I see Leslie, Commissioner, the Commissioner hasn't finished. Are you, are you done? Okay, I have a response. Yeah, I have, I have a response, but we'll go to Leslie, yeah.
Um, well, Mario, the, the city's actually set aside $4 million in housing funds to do just that. It's called the Protect Our, what is it, Sean? Protect Our Diversity Program?
Preserving our diversity.
That is money, $4 million set aside for rent subsidies for people who are facing, is it three? I think it was four.
Two, two.
No, but they added two this year. They added two this year. The two first two million, the first two million was for seniors, the second two million was for other people.
Is that linked to a, a certain number of people that we would keep in their homes or is that?
So this is the issue.
Until the money runs out.
Yeah.
But this is the issue. It's not, I, it's, it's, I'm pretty sure it's only two right now. There's a discussion of, um, there's a discussion of qualifying other types of, um, renters for the program, but I don't think that has worked its way through the legislative pipeline. But remember that initially the POD program, which I worked on, um, with Chair Soloff, when I was chairing the Social Services Commission, um, we added substantial wraparound services to it in order to ensure that these dollars were last dollars. So that people were getting their VASH vouchers, they were getting their, anything they were eligible for to help them have enough residual income was, was going to come in first. And even then, that program was restricted to Santa Monica residents over 65 who had been in the same rent controlled unit since the year 2000. And so when you looked at the cost of a subsidy to that individual, right? Um, actuarially speaking, uh, we wish them long and healthy lives, but actuarially speaking, it was far and away more cost effective to keep those individuals in their current apartments, whatever the subsidy needed to be, um, than to purchase, essentially build or purchase new apartment units for them, given that small universe. And to Commissioner Fonda Bernardi's point, I don't know that I necessarily am going as far as you went in terms of saying, let's move money from one to the other. I first want to ask the question of what money is out there? What are the projections for revenue over the next decade? How much are, is each program going to cost? And therefore, how many, how many people do we expect to be able to keep in their homes? How many people do we expect to be able to help through relocation or other programs that we talked about at the technical committee? There was a, it's a list of, what, Ellis, 10 programs, I think, maybe more. Um, each of which has a cost, each of which has a benefit. And I think for us to understand what we're looking at over the next decade, we need to know those numbers. And, and Mario, I think you're asking exactly the right question. What money is available for services and subsidies? What money is available for acquisition or construction? And then we have the policy discussion here and, um, then the council has it about how to allocate that money and how best to use it. But I feel my point at this point in the evening is just to say, I'd love that data. I'd love the, I'd, I'd love to know what those numbers are, what the rules are and what the projections are, so that we can then have an informed discussion.
You also know that none of the money used for rent subsidies, I'm not saying it shouldn't be, counts toward RENA.
Understood.
The pot is limited and the demand is infinite. And we, we have to be Solomon here and decide what has the greatest leverage. And right now, I think the greatest leverage is keeping people in their homes at almost any cost.
Which, which also may mean, sorry, I see, I see Jim, which also may mean, because I think we do get RENA credit. If we can convert a market rate unit to a deed restricted unit, if we can acquire and convert that unit, do we get RENA credit or no?
It's under very, uh, strict conditions that it can count. So we are looking very carefully at that. Um, I mean, I think as an overall perspective, one, one thing that the council had asked of Sippers to on a parallel track was, um, you know, sort of legislative proposals or advocacy, as, as the city always does every year. Um, you know, so that's something that we're looking carefully at to see if there is a case to be made to, um, you know, given the interest in, um, and, you know, of, of keeping, um, people in the units. Um, if we're able to create programs for, um, conversion of existing units or what have you. Um, you know, is there any, are there any legs to, you know, open up whether they count? You know, because like I said, that the conditions under which they count right now are, are very, very restrictive and quite challenging to me.
I have Commissioner Reese. Great, Leslie, Jim's been waiting.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know, I think Jim just wanted, just to answer the question I wanted to ask was, what was the tie in between this interesting discussion about the statistics and our RENA number? Yes, if we can try to figure out a way where we can convert a market rate to a low income and get credit for it, that'd be great. But I, as far as I know, that doesn't work. So I'd love to see if Jim can follow that up. Um, I also agree that keeping people in their houses makes a lot more sense. But I don't think that's really our job that we're tasked with on this housing element. So I was just trying to figure out where we were going with this discussion.
Commissioner Raskin and then Commissioner Lambert?
Briefly responding to Commissioner Reese's point, I, I think that, that really this is part of the broader housing element discussion to the extent that, you know, we're, uh, you know, creating policy for, uh, creating the best possible housing environment. And, and I think that this is also relevant to mitigating impacts associated with potential displacement. Uh, once, uh, you know, if we, if we do end up, uh, creating market conditions that, uh, end up, uh, you know, either accelerating gentrification or, or just making it more difficult for people to afford their rents. So, uh, I, I, I do think that this is part of the, a relevant discussion.
Commissioner Lambert?
Uh, I, I've been pushing acquisition of rehab for as long as I can remember. Um, the, the, the major hurdle with the state is that you have to prove the building is at risk. Meaning it's going to go Ellis or it's, you know, it's somehow at risk versus the tenants in the building are at risk. And I think that's something we should look at. It also, there's also, there are no leveraging resources for acquisition of rehab. You can't use tax credits unless it's a huge rehab project. And the state doesn't have money for it, assuming they ever get money again. So it's really all local money that goes into acquisition of rehab, which is no reason not to do it. Because it does protect the tenants in the building.
And to Commissioner Reese's point, I, I think, I, you're, I mean, yes, and it's, for, for me, being on the technical committee, it seems clear that we have obligations in the, um, through this process related to affirmatively furthering fair housing, um, and related to preventing displacement, um, where it is important for us to know what resources we have at our disposal. Uh, and particularly in a situation where we're being expected to produce twice as much affordable housing as we are expected to produce above market rate housing, um, puts us in this somewhat odd position of having to make a credible case to the state that we can act, that we can generate that housing, um, but in the absence of, of resources to do it with and in the presence of very high land costs and, and construction costs that aren't getting any lower. So, um, I, I hear your point, um, and I think it's well taken. But I, I do think that the information can be helpful for our decision-making process. And certainly if we listen to council, that this is, this is stuff they're grappling with, um, that, you know, will, will play out as we produce a compliant, a legally compliant housing element. So, yeah. And then I hope we can keep going. Leslie, did you want to say something?
Nope.
Nope. Oh, good. Okay. Uh, with that, unless anyone has anything to add, yep, Mario. You're muted. You're still muted. There you go.
I shouldn't be. Okay. Uh, I wanted to raise the discussion of converting a surplus office space into housing. Uh, there's a surprising amount of it, like on the order of 1.3 billion square feet just in Santa Monica that's for lease. Uh, and it is likely going to be leased up for quite a while. And I would think that at least 600,000 square feet of that would be available in the sense that you would still have a 9% vacancy rate. We've got about a 16% vacancy rate in office space. Uh, and the main advantage of office space conversions is that typically those buildings, uh, the office conversion could be done if we gave them the right code breaks, could be done as tenant improvements, which is very different. They would come online much faster and the permitting would be much cheaper. Uh, and then the other advantage, of course, is that particularly if they were slightly newer buildings, they tend to be fully handicapped accessible. They have typically a lot of parking. So they're already set up for that and, uh, it's a question of us getting rid of some of the impediments. One of the impediments is the requirement for open space. In other words, most housing codes require you have X amount of open space per unit and X amount of common open space. And commercial buildings typically don't have that. But in the interest of bringing online a lot of housing quickly and affordably, uh, that would be a good value. To me, I would be willing to give up the open space. I know that sounds nuts in COVID world. But in terms of the housing crisis, I think it would be a valuable discussion to have in terms of the trade offs. And, uh, and so we don't have a train wreck at the end of the month when we're all trying to cram in all this discussion uh, and give staff direction. I think that's something that staff should look at and actually run some typical buildings to see what would be the impediments for that conversion? Should we roll in that direction?
Commissioner Lambert?
I just have a couple of responses to that. Um, and I'm certainly not against it. Um, but I, I think if we're willing to get rid of the open space, we should probably ask the future housing consumers whether they're willing to get rid of the open space, not just us. Uh, and number two, um, in the site inventory, don't we actually have to identify addresses for potential housing would go?
Yeah, we, we do. Um, and so this, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi's concept is something that has been brought up um, in the working groups and actually in the broader public comment, um, as well. It is something that we are, uh, looking at, um, uh, in terms of, um, the production group, you know, given the amount of housing providers there as to, you know, what, what would it take um, to do something like this? Um, because I think, you know, it's one thing to come up with a program. Um, it's another thing to also convince HCD that it's viable and then translate it to a site. So, um, you know, I think these are things that like, because so much of this is new, um, you know, we'll be working. Um, I think we want to touch base with HCD staff because there, there are a lot of great, you know, ideas out there in terms of how can we produce more units? And, you know, there's not really, um, a black and white, um, you know, yes, you know, this is exactly the evidence you need to produce. Um, you know, so we'll be doing that work to sort of work with them on, you know, what would they accept, um, in terms of assumptions, you know, that we would make, um, in terms of fights and assumptions on units produced.
Well, I think a major issue, and I assume they would be looking at that, this is the economic impact on the tax base of the city by doing this. And not to mention potential jobs being lost, assuming COVID passes and we actually need to reuse some of the commercials. So I'm assuming that's all going into the calculus of what you're doing.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, it would be something obviously to understand and, um, you know, it's a, it's a policy choice, obviously.
All right, right.
Can I add some thoughts to that? My feeling is a lot of those jobs are already lost and it is to our benefit to get a better job housing balance back in our city. And to just to say, well, we have to bring those jobs back when we have a housing crisis, an affordability crisis, seems to me that we're kind of, we have the jobs, the jobs are already here. Some of them have left, more will leave in the future. So all that space is not being used and it could be used. Um, so I'm not so concerned about the tax points of the city at this point. I'm more concerned about how to get housing cheaply in place. And permitting, remember, is just the beginning of it. Uh, but right now, if you say to me, well, every so often we'll have to take out X square feet for, uh, open space. That's great. Uh, it just adds to the cost. And if you're willing to throw out the car, you might be willing to throw out some open space uh, to get to the same place, so that at least you're not changing the skin of the building. You're working within the box of the building, which is always cheaper. The moment you start monkeying with the skin, whether you're putting a roof deck on or putting on balconies on the building, now you're into serious structure. You're not doing tenant improvement anymore. Now you're paring out the bones of the building. So that's what we're trying to avoid. And, uh, a lot of these buildings are, you know, not the A kind of buildings. They're the B and C buildings and their square foot rents are very similar to what you might see in a typical NMS new building, except they're old buildings. And anytime you preserve an old building, that's a good thing. So I think it's a very productive avenue that we should look at and start to mine that vein.
Uh, I think we should move on, but Commissioner, I, I cannot not respond to your cavalier dismissal of jobs in this community. If anything, uh, if anything we learned from the budget crisis, that Santa Monica is far too dependent on certain sectors, uh, of which, um, of which good, uh, office jobs is not one. Um, and I don't know how the economy is going to change, but, um, I don't feel comfortable. We're a land use commission, but I don't feel comfortable simply dismissing the idea that, or, or saying that Santa Monica just doesn't need jobs. I agree with you that we have a substantial housing and jobs imbalance. But, um, I don't believe, and I don't believe it's appropriate to say that the solution to that is to just let jobs go. I, I, I know too many people who are struggling to, uh, to just let that go like that. So, um, I appreciate your perspective, but I would like to suggest that we move on. Okay, uh, let us go to item 11, um, written communications. Uh, we have one, uh, letter of public correspondence that we received. Um, I'm, I'm not entirely certain, um, that what we can do with that letter, except acknowledge that it exists. Um, I, I would like to state for the record that the people of Santa Monica made their will with respect to the airport property eminently clear with the passage of Measure LC in 2014. Um, and, uh, suggest that we leave it at that. But if anyone else wants to comment about written correspondence, they're welcome. Seeing none, let's move on to the next item, uh, which is item 12. And I do not believe we have any public comments. So is that correct?
Correct. No comment.
Terrific. And so as we head now into item 9A, let me state the following. Um, my family and I have multiple personal connections with the appellant, uh, Mr. Thomas Malale in this appeal hearing. While I do not have any financial relationship with the appellant, nor do I have any financial interests in the real property subject to the application that would require disqualification under state law, due to my family's close relationships with the appellant and his family, and to avoid any appearance of impropriety or bias, will recuse myself from this matter. Turn the chair over to Commissioner Pass. Have a great night, everyone.
Husband Landros, we'll see you next time. Okay, uh, Sean's gone. Okay, so moving along to item 9A, which is 2425 20th Street. It's an appeal of the Architectural Review Board. an appeal of the Architectural Review Board approval of that address for a two-story, three-unit condominium development totaling 5,464 square feet with one level of subterranean parking. Let's start by, are there any ex parte disclosures? Commissioner Raskin.
Thank you. Yeah, I've had multiple, or I'd say many communications with the city staff over the past week. On Monday and Tuesday of this week, I had emailed correspondence about the tree on this property with Santa Monica Urban Forest Supervisor, Mr. Dorta. And on Monday of this week, I had conversations with Frank Gruber about architecture generally in the city, and we talked briefly about this specific project.
Thank you, Commissioner Raskin. Commissioner Fondo Bernardi.
Yeah, I visited the site this afternoon at 2:30.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Lambert.
I've got back to some time. I'm very familiar with 20th Street because I used to go north my house. But I also visited the site today and walked around and tried to make my way through the alley with all the garbage receptacles that were out. So I'm very familiar with the site and the adjacent property.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah, sorry, I neglected to mention that I also visited the site on Monday.
Thank you. Okay, with that, let's go ahead and have the staff report, please.
Let me just show you my screen. Okay, is that, can I run through my screen right now?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Ross.
No problem. Good evening. My name is Ross Furman, and I'm an associate planner for the City Planning Division of Santa Monica. The project before you is 20 ENT 0261, an appeal of the Architecture Review Board approval of the design, colors, materials, and landscape plans for the construction of a new two-story, three-unit condominium development totaling 5,464 square feet with one level of subterranean parking. As this is an appeal, it is a de novo hearing, and therefore, the planning commission, acting as the ARB, may consider the aspects originally under the purview of the ARB, which are the design, colors, materials, and landscaping for the project. The project is located at 2425 20th Street, mid-block between Pearl Street and Ocean Park Boulevard. The subject parcel is 6,750 square feet and is located within the R2 Zone District, with an R1 single-family neighborhood immediately to the rear across the alley. To give you a little background of the site and project, the parcel was originally developed in 1928 with a one-story, single-unit dwelling. In March 2019, the applicant submitted a demolition application. And on May 13, during the 75-day waiting period, the application was reviewed by the Landmarks Commission, who found no credible evidence to process with a further public hearing to determine whether the existing development met the criteria for a city landmark or structural merit. In May of 2020, the planning commission approved a vesting tenant parcel map to create three airspace parcels on a single parcel. And on October 19, the proposed project was approved on the consent agenda by the ARB. After approval, on October 29, the appellant filed an appeal of the ARB approval. As mentioned, the proposed project is a three-unit condominium development. The proposed building footprint is situated outside of the required front, side, and rear setbacks, and provides all required additional front and side modulation. The front unit entrance has been carved out of the front facade to clearly identify its entry, or the two rear units enter along the south elevation. Access to the subterranean garage is taken from the alley, and a trash enclosure is also located along the alley adjacent to the driveway. Individual private outdoor space is provided along the sides of the parcel, within the side, within, sorry, the sides of the parcel, within the side setbacks, and at the rear of the property. As can be seen, landscaping is also incorporated wherever is possible. The building is a contemporary style, designed in a series of rectilinear volumes terminating at a flat roof. The simple design appears as if the building is one solid form that has been systematically carved away in the strategic areas. This design concept provides visual interest and relief to the overall massing and scale of the building. At two stories and 28 feet high, the proposed massing and scale are appropriate for the context of 20th Street and the single-unit residential to the rear. The design further complies with all applicable transition development standards required when a multi-unit residential zone district abuts a single-unit residential neighborhood, such as limiting the building height to 23 feet within 25 feet of the R1 district, and providing a 20-foot rear setback instead of 15. The design concept is further enhanced through a consistent application of high-quality materials and colors. The exterior planes of the building are sheathed in a dark solid cement board, with recessed areas finished in white sand, fine white, fine sand, white painted stucco. Not only does this provide a three-dimensional quality to the building, but the change in the material brings textural interest, and the simple color palette provides a sophistication to the design. Arithmically placed dark anodized aluminum windows provide needed transparency and a break in the design. Landscaping will be provided within low board-formed concrete planters within the front setback, that provide a pedestrian-oriented connection to the building. Along with other drought-tolerant planting, the focal point of the front landscaping will be a shoestring, a cautious tree that can reach a height of 40 feet. The remainder of the landscaping will largely be along the south side and rear of the parcel. Two coastal live oak trees are provided at the rear of the parcel to provide the required landscape buffer between the subject R2 parcel and the R1 parcels to the rear. The choice of plant types help reinforce the strength of the overall design. Prior and during the ARB meeting, three comments were provided to the board. The three comments, as summarized on this slide, brought up concerns regarding general site conditions of the parcel, construction-related impacts, and the need for adequate trash facilities. Having considered all public comment, the ARB decided to keep the item on consent, as the majority of the items were outside the board's purview of design, colors, materials, and landscaping. And they felt confident that the project would continue to be reviewed for compliance, and that staff could address small revisions. Therefore, the board approved the item on consent due to its strong, comprehensive design. As previously mentioned, the role of the planning commission tonight during this hearing is to act as the ARB and to review the project's design, colors, materials, and landscaping. There are four ARB findings that need to be made, which are that the project is of good taste and good design, that the project is not inferior quality, such as to cause impact to the surrounding neighborhood, that the project is compatible with developments in the general area, and that the project is in conformity with the effective guideline standards and all other applicable ordinances. As mentioned, 10 days after the ARB approval, the appellant submitted an appeal stating a variety of issues, such as lack of public engagement, deficient landscaping, lack of vehicular access safeguards, insufficient trash enclosure, design impacts on adjacent parcels, and overall concern regarding property maintenance. While all these issues are addressed within the staff report, I wanted to highlight a few of them, as they are related to the project before you and the overall process. So for public comment, the appellant asserts that the public was not given the opportunity to comment on the project. Due to the constraints brought upon by COVID-19 pandemic, the ARB is conducting virtual meetings, and public comment is being received in the following ways. Comments received prior to 12:00 p.m. the day of the hearing are provided to the board and posted online, and comments provided after 12:00 p.m., or up to the discussion of the item, are read by staff to the board. For the ARB review of the project, three comments were received, one distributed to ARB prior to the meeting, and two read by staff into the record at the meeting. Therefore, staff finds the public comment was still provided, received, and considered by the ARB. Next is the approval on consent agenda. The appellant asserts that the project should not have been approved on consent due to public comment. Staff originally placed the item on consent due to the project's strong design concept and high-quality colors, materials, and landscaping. As mentioned previously, three comments were received prior to the ARB meeting. Having considered all public comment, and after acknowledging the project would continue to be refined by other divisions as it moved through the process, the ARB decided to keep the item on consent, as the majority of the concerns were outside the board's purview, and because of the strength of the project's design. The ARB acknowledged that any future revisions would be able to be viewed by staff, as is common. Next is the resource and recovery enclosure. The appellant asserts that the project did not provide a compliant trash enclosure. Originally, the trash enclosure was proposed in the subterranean level. However, subsequent to the ARB approval, the applicant has worked with the city's RRR division and revised the plans to now provide a compliant trash enclosure at grade along the alley, as can be seen in this picture on the left hand of the slide. Landscaping. The appellant asserts that there was deficient landscaping, especially at the rear of the property. The applicant has revised the plans to ensure compliance by adding an additional tree at the rear of the property to address the transition requirements from an R2 to an R1 district, which requires a tree screen to be planted, with the trees planted at a minimum interval of 15 feet. So as you can see on this picture as well, there are two trees being provided instead of the original one that was reviewed at the ARB hearing. And lastly, impacts to adjacent parcels. The appellant brings up concerns regarding impacts to adjacent parcels. As mentioned, the proposed project before you is compliant with all development standards, including ones related to the transition from an R2 to an R1 district. Additionally, the project, in some cases, is below development standard thresholds, such as the overall height being 28 feet when 30 feet is permitted. As far as the design, 20th Street is predominantly developed with multi-unit residential ranging between one and three stories in a variety of design styles. And as such, staff finds the project's design will be complementary to the existing development along 20th Street. Therefore, staff finds that the project is code-compliant and will not adversely affect adjacent properties in regard to the design of the structure. As per usual, for the planning commission hearing, notices were sent out to property owners and tenants within a 750-foot radius. And the project was published in the Santa Monica Daily Press. Prior to this hearing, two comments were received and have been provided to the commission. So to conclude, staff recommends that the planning commission deny the appeal and uphold the Architecture Review Board's approval based on the analysis and findings within the staff report. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Ross. I am actually going to kick us off with a couple of questions. I've got some questions for the city attorney, actually. So Ross had mentioned a couple of things. One, that the project is fully compliant with all the development standards in the code. He also mentioned that there were a number of appeal points which were outside the ARB's purview. So can you talk to us a little bit, and that this is a de novo hearing, so we are stepping in the shoes of the ARB. So can you talk to me a little bit about what kind of authority we actually have here, given the Housing Accountability Act, which very much limits discretion when a project meets, a housing project meets the applicable standards?
Sure. Sorry, do you want me to start?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, as you mentioned, and as Ross made clear, this housing project meets all of the applicable objective standards of the zoning ordinance and the general plan and any applicable specific plan, which means that, under the Housing Accountability Act, the city has no ability to condition the project, to deny the project, or condition the project in such a way that would reduce the density of the project, unless you make some very specific findings about, you know, health and safety that are, you know, the state has made very clear that those conditions exist very, very rarely. So essentially, you are being asked this evening to sit in the shoes of the ARB, which is a limited jurisdiction. It is design, material, colors. But also overlaid with that is the restraints of the HAA, which do not permit you to condition the project in such a way that would reduce the density or basically render it infeasible.
So, given that, are we allowed to just willy-nilly, that's a technical legal term, you know, ask for changes in the design? I mean, if I decided that I just don't like the facade, can I say you have to change that when there's no actual standard that requires them to do so?
So I would say that you have some ability to shape the project, but you are very constrained by ensuring that you are not unduly interfering with this project's ability to move forward with the three units as proposed. And so you, and you are also required to ensure that whatever action you're taking, that you're making the findings either way, for approval based on the design or denial based on the four factors that Ross has set forth. Okay. And then, and as you mentioned, too, anything that's outside of the ARB's purview is likewise outside of your purview this evening.
And can you specify for us which of the appeal points, and it's probably in the staff report, I just want to air it here again, as to which of the appeal points are outside the purview of us today?
Sure. So I will start, and I will let Ross hop in in case I miss anything. But I believe it is, you know, construction, construction management and coordination. The trash enclosures, you have some ability to perhaps shape how that is located and, you know, how that fits in with the overall design of the project. But that is a code-compliance issue as well, ensuring that, sorry, Ross, what else am I missing?
I think the other appeal summary was talked about the original comments that were provided to ARB, how an applicant was able to speak to them. There was public noticing concerns, whether the project should have been approved on the consent agenda or not. Those were kind of the items that were not largely related to the design of the building.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. One last sort of like technical question. And what is the requirement, or is there one in the code with regards to when something can be on a consent agenda?
So that would actually be governed by the rules of order of the ARB, as it is with the planning commission. And they are generally considered to be items that are not controversial, and staff has felt like they've worked with the applicant to such a degree that they don't, you know, determine, they don't feel like a lot of discussion is going to be necessary. And just as with the planning commission, you know, items can be pulled from consent if commissioners or board members feel discussion in the staff report would be helpful.
And the commissioners at the ARB were, it's my understanding, based on what we read in the report, that they were given the opportunity to pull it from consent?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, those are my, thank you, commissioners, for indulging me to go first. I just wanted to sort of set the stage of what our purview is here. So with that, who else has questions for staff? Let's start with Commissioner Lambert.
Well, actually, you've covered much, you've covered much of what I was going to ask. I just want to confirm with staff, and I'm pretty sure this is the case, the trash enclosure location, size, et cetera, has been approved by the city. Is that correct?
That is correct. The trash enclosure that originally was seen by the ARB had not been vetted by the RRR division, but the applicant has since worked with that division. And what the plans that have been provided to you are compliant and have been approved by that division, for its location and its size.
Okay, so that's that. And then in terms of the safety of the parking egress and access from the alley, that also has been approved by the mobility division, right?
Yes, it has. Very limited changes have actually taken place between ARB and planning commission. They really only had to do with the slope of the ramp. But everything else has been approved and was largely consistent with what ARB had seen. But they also received mobility approval.
So I just wanted to confirm that. That's not necessarily within our purview tonight. And then in terms of construction management, and I think Elisa brought this up, that is not something that ARB deals with, but the city has requirements, and those requirements will be very clear to the applicant, correct?
They will be during the planning, the building permit review process, yes.
Okay, and then also, there are code standards regarding the distance of an R2 development from an adjacent R1. Does this project meet those standards?
It does. There are three standards that have to do with the transition. One is kind of the setbacks, one is a planting screen, the other is the height within a certain distance, and all three are complied with with this project.
I mean, my observation today is that there's an R1, there's a single family across the alley from this site. And it appears that house is easily 50 feet from the back fence. That's just like my eyeballing it. And then you've got 20 feet of the alley. And what is the side, the backyard setbacks, 10 feet, 15 feet?
Technically, it's meant to be 15 feet from centerline alley, but the transition requirements actually require it to be 20 feet, and this project is further than that. So it actually is providing more space than the code actually allows or requires.
Then we're talking about a distance to the adjacent R1 property of, God, I don't know, 80 or 90 feet from the house on the site.
I could at least comment that from the rear property line, there is 45 feet.
To the house?
No, just to the rear property line. I don't know, I don't know the distance. No, just to the rear property line. I don't know, I don't know the distance.
So the point is there's substantial distance between the house on that site, the R1 house, and the site itself. And then finally, they could actually have built four units on this site, correct?
Yes, they, they could have, and potentially even more if they went after a state density bonus. So they're very much within density.
And we know why they stayed at three, don't we?
Probably.
Because four, four units triggers the affordable housing requirements. And finally, is, is our decision tonight appealable to the city council?
It is not. It ends, it ends here. So your decision is the final path for the, the appellant or the applicant.
Thank you. And again, to Lisa's point, we are the ARB tonight. We are not the planning commission, correct?
Very much so.
We are limited to the jurisdiction of the ARB in our comments and any recommendations we have.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lambert. Commissioner Raskin.
Thank you. I'll, I'll start with some questions, jumping off of the questions about our purview. Ross, forgive me if I got this wrong, but I thought you mentioned that, that notice issues might be outside our purview. But my understanding is that's a due process issue that very much is within the purview of any body acting in a quasi adjudicative capacity. Is that right?
I, I mean, essentially, if you feel that the noticing was not adequate for ARB, potentially that could be a reason for the appeal. We did make sure that ample noticing was provided for this planning commission to rectify any of those concerns. Public site posting was provided well beyond the timeframe. So we did try to make sure that if that was a concern, it was very much addressed for this hearing.
Sure. Yeah. I just wanted to clarify that, you know, if, if we were to find hypothetically that noticing were not adequate, that would be grounds for potential denial. But, thinking it's here.
Technically, I mean, you, you are only really can deny a project if it doesn't meet one of the four findings. And the four findings for Architecture Review Board is, they don't mention noticing, essentially. It's all about the design, the compatibility with the neighborhood. So to be able to deny a project, you would have to be able to not make one of those four findings.
Well, but our, our procedures have to comply with due process. I, you know, I don't want to get down a rabbit hole here, but.
So if I, if I, if I may just jump in, so maybe to help. So, you know, if, if the commission had concerns about that issue, our office and staff, we would be willing to talk to the commission about potential options. Because as Mr. Furman pointed out, it's not explicit, it's not expressly in the code that that would be a grounds for a denial. However, of course, we want to ensure that due process is followed with all of, with all of the proceedings. So, so we would certainly work with the commission on potential continuance or, or options to ensure that due process, you know, was upheld and followed.
Sure, sure. Yeah. Thank you for indulging that line of questioning. And then if we find that the project is not compliant with the building code or the general plan, that is a grounds for denial. Is that correct?
Yes. One of the, one of the findings is that it has to be applicable to any ordinance or code. So that would be finding number four.
Okay. So I do want to talk a little bit in more depth about the building code standards here, especially for the second floor setbacks. And I very much appreciate you answering my questions about this by email throughout the week. And, and so I submitted for, for, as a public attachment, municipal code section 9.08.030. And specifically for R2, projects in the R2 zone, that says that the second floor has to be 90% of, quote, the, let me make sure I get this right, of the allowable ground floor coverage, quote unquote. I, I'm a little, you know, since we last talked, I'm curious if you've had any more insights why that code section is that to be allowable hypothetical ground floor coverage rather than what's actually built, it built. And, you know, to the extent that Commissioner Reese wants to opine on that, I think that he was on the commission when this section was last updated in 2014. I'd be curious to learn a little bit more information about the genesis of that.
I'm not sure if I can sufficiently speak to kind of how the loose was then translated into the zoning ordinance. But you are correct that the zoning ordinance does read that the second floor is a percentage of what is allowed at the ground floor, not necessarily what is actually built. However, there are a handful of additional modulation standards to make sure that even if there is a perceived larger second floor, that the massing has been reduced by additional side and front additional setbacks. So that is to make sure it's not just one large box at the top. But I, I personally can't speak to why it was chose to be the allowable ground floor coverage, but that is how the code has been implemented, at least since I have been here and I think since the 2015 update. So, but there are measures in place to make sure that there is a reduction in the overall volume of the building as it gets larger and higher stories.
Commissioner Fondo Bernardi, did you have something to weigh in on, on this particular topic? I mean, I'd like us to focus on what the standards are, not.
Yes. So there is some wisdom to the idea of measuring the second floor, not in real proportion to the floor below, but in proportion to the allowable. Because what that allows you to do is to shrink the ground floor without a penalty. Otherwise, it would also shrink your second floor to provide more open space at the level of the living floors of the unit, meaning normally the bedrooms are on the second floor on these buildings. And the kitchen, living room, dining then can open up a larger ground floor spaces without having to therefore shrink the whole building. If you were having a smaller ground floor, then you would also have to shrink your bedroom. So there is some wisdom there to that, to that approach. Gives us some design flexibility.
That is a great point.
My, my concern, and I'll, I'll put this in the form of a question, is, you know, wouldn't then if you have a cantilevered design or even, even a building, you know, that's 23 feet tall, where the second floor and first floor are the same floor area, that that would conflict with general plan policy in 1.7, which generally requires upper floor setbacks along neighborhood streets?
Okay. I mean, can I, Commissioner Raskin, I, I mean, I, I really do not want to spend time getting into whether or not, at the time that those regulations were adopted, that whether or not they should have been adopted, or whether we like them, or whether we think there's some inconsistency. I mean, I, I think we need to focus on, and if you think that there is inconsistency between both of those things and that the project doesn't meet one of them, I think that we can talk about that. But let's stay away from the intent of the legislation.
Sure. I, I mean, this gets, I think it gets to the, you know, questions about whether or not this is a code-compliant building and whether or not the word allowable in the code is, is a typo or not. But, you know, I'll reserve the rest of that for, for discussion. And, you know, I'll, I'll end my questions there.
Thank you, Commissioner Raskin. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the appellant presentation, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry, I just popped on your screen.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Before you start, how long do you want for your presentation or do you need?
I think it'll be about 10 minutes, eight minutes. I think I'm allocating 15, but I.
That's fine. Okay. No, that's fine. Okay. Thank you.
And also, Vice Chair, I would like to have my next door neighbor, Greg Moreno, reserve some time for him. Either we can do that in the rebuttal period or we can do that after I finish, as you wish.
Is Mr. Moreno part of your team or is he speaking as a public comment?
He's part of my team.
Okay. Then he can speak as part of your 15 minutes and you can choose whether or not he speaks during this period or in the rebuttal period.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair. Again, my name's Thomas Malale and I live at 2432 21st Street. Commissioner Lambert, you had mentioned the single family home. This is the property directly across the street from the applicant's project. I appreciate the commissioner's time, the public's time and the city staff's time for me to kind of say what I need to say. We've owned this house since 2009, so I've observed the property over an extended period of time. And I won't go through the appeal document through some technical terms in there about due process and items like that. I think it'll be more beneficial for the commissioners just to give a broad, a discussion of three categories. And the three categories I want to discuss are community input, government processes, and the project design and landscaping. So on the community input side, the applicant apparently is not a town developer based on the mailing address. I will tell you, they have conducted no outreach to the adjacent property owners, including the two multifamily buildings adjacent to my knowledge. I've been on, I've filed letters with the city, so I'm not hiding anywhere. And I was available to discuss the project with the applicant. I know the code doesn't require necessarily outreach, but it seems to me it was a mistake not to do so. And part of the reason I believe that is that a lot of these concerns, I think, could have been addressed through communication. You know, one of the things that I noticed that was on my door yesterday night was this. And this was a flyer, not by me, but probably somebody in that apartment building, perhaps somebody who filed comment. And it has the tree that's cut down and all their concerns about the project. And I don't know who the person was, but my point is, is that there were lots of people who were upset about this project. Because I, of course, take my trash out in the alley and I hear from renters that live across the street. The applicant's conduct is very telling to this project. One, cutting down the tree while also telling neighbors that they were going to try to incorporate the project and then two days later it's cut down. I also filed a complaint with the city because there was, you know, like a bee's nest or something. They left it in the alley and it was attracting all sorts of rodents and things like that. So I had to report that to the city. The applicant has not maintained the property since they required it. I can just show you this photo from today. You know, there's, there's two, there's two mattresses, garbage. And I've reported those to the cities in the. It seems to me the applicant has had a disregard for the health and safety for people that live in this neighborhood. It wouldn't be that difficult to at least maintain, keep your property clean, particularly during a pandemic when people have their windows open in these apartments and they have their kids studying at home. They often say that past behavior is predictive of future behavior. And we, the community that actually lives here, have kind of been living through how the appellant has conducted himself. And we're very concerned about the conduct going forward. That may not be the purview of the ARB, but the conduct up until now is very instructive. We're particularly concerned about a construction process during a pandemic. It's well-known by the CDC and other government agencies that ventilation is critical. Most of the people in these apartment buildings across the street don't have air conditioning. Their windows are open. And as far as I can tell, you know, many of them have children at SMM USD schools and they're working from home. And we're talking about a master project that might be 18 months. So thinking about the design is important. When it is in the ARB's purview to look at design. And as far as I can tell, there's no landscaping on the sides of the property. And you have apartment buildings directly up against this property. As far, another thing I can, as I can tell, is that even with my previous correspondence, it doesn't appear that any of these concerns have been tried, even attempted to be tried to be addressed. The second category, government processes, I think that Ross, who I respect, did a nice job giving an overview. But a lot of the revisions that have happened have been since I made the appeal. The plan you're looking at, the revised plan, is not the plan that went through the ARB in October. It's a revised plan. So when you look at those, some of those concerns have been what's come through the appeal process. You know, one of the things in the staff report, it says there's been no complaints to the code compliance. That's just an inaccurate statement. The city has an app on their phone, which you can use. I have filed complaints on the city's app. I'd be happy to provide those to the, you sitting as ARB if you wished. With respect to processes, you may or may not recall, but before you granted subdivision approval, what I understand is a discretionary approval and you have to grant it. I did write a letter. I'm aware that a subdivision was going to be approved. But I, I tried to outline those concerns. Maybe not so much for you, but for the applicant, the developer, for him to understand that people around here care what happens on the property. I also spoke to city staff before that meeting and after the planning commission hearing where you granted subdivision approval. So there's no secret about what these issues are. And clearly, if they were addressed, we wouldn't be sitting here this evening discussing it. So in short, public pressure was necessary in order to effectuate any change here. Otherwise, we would have the plan that the ARB looked at in October. As a resident, a citizen and a taxpayer here for more than 20 years, I will say that I'm just disappointed with the government processes in this. It doesn't seem like the government departments and agencies work together in a collaborative and holistic fashion to provide what residents want here. We live here. There's tons of residents in that building who, you know what? They probably don't have the resources to do an appeal like I do, or maybe the knowledge or experience. Finally, I want to talk about project design, what I think is directly related to the purview of ARB, you sitting in de novo. While I acknowledge the site is an R2 zone, it's also true that there was a single family home that still sits there for the last 70 years. So while he has a subdivision approval, while he can build three units under the code, just because one can do something doesn't mean one should. And tripling the density. Tripling the density of the site and changing the vehicle or access from the front to the alley. It's allowed per government policy here in Santa Monica. But as I noticed, three commissioners walked the site today. It's like a maze of trash cans in there. So now we're going to have six cars with all those strips going down an alley that looks in a very decrepit fashion with garbage pails all over the place. And I'll also tell you, because the city policy to put people down 20th Street and 21st Street, kids play in that alley in that apartment building, from those apartment buildings. I see them. And so I just think that that has to be cognizant. Yes, in a, from great planning, I understand the city wants to put the cars to the alley. But you have to do the rest of the job. You have to make sure that the trash receptacles are put away, that they're stored, that people are sighted if they don't put things away. I'm going to focus, the, the density, I understand. I'm not, my argument is not about whether it's an R2 or whether they have the ability to do that under the code. So specifically with Reese, with the project design, I'm just going to focus on the rear of the property, given where I live. But I will tell you that the apartment buildings on both sides have serious concerns about the size because their windows are going to look right into this project. But I will focus on the rear of the project. So originally, the project that was presented to the ARB had one tree, one tree. We do know this is a transition from an R2 zone to an R1 zone. There's specific requirements in the code that are required. One of the things that it says, the code requires a tree screen for projects adjacent to an R1. Now, what's the plain meaning of a tree screen? I can guarantee it doesn't mean one tree. That was what ARB approved. The plain meaning of a tree screen, in my mind, would mean on a 50-foot wide lot, four trees, because the minimum requirement is every 15 feet. Alternatively, the developer or the applicant can decide to build a hedge. The city code has no height limit on an alley. Remember, this is a 28-foot building, that today it's a one-story house. The 28-foot building, flat wall on the back. If you look at the rendering that they proposed to the ARB, you can see it looks like it's rodeo drive on the alley. It certainly is not, if you want it. And so now we have two trees. I think it can be improved with better landscaping. Ross had mentioned that the applicant has been so gracious by, the, the setback is going to be 25 feet. The applicant is moving the building back 25 feet because if he was within 25 feet, it would only be allowed to be 23 feet tall. So by moving back 10 feet, he gets five feet more of height. So let's not think he's so hospitable. With respect to the wall, on the plan, the concrete wall that's proposed is six feet tall. Code allows eight feet. It seems to me, given the access on the alley, privacy, security, would be a simple thing to do an eight-foot wall as opposed to a six-foot wall. The parking I talked about, one of the things I'm surprised, the plans that are before you and the design, there's six parking spaces. On the plan, though, they show three bedrooms, which isn't, is it, are they two-bedroom units or three-bedroom units? Because as I understand, parking spaces are driven by, maybe they're not. But in any event, right now, we have no access to the property. And now we're going to have at least six cars. I assume there'll be three families there. And I know Commissioner Lambert made a comment about why there's only three versus four. We all know what's going to be built there. There're going to be $2 million townhomes. That's what's going to be there. So I appreciate your time. I think I'm going to save Greg's time to the rebuttal since I've gone 12 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mala- Malaial. Sorry if I totally butchered that.
Malaial. It's like Malaysia, but, you know.
Oh, okay. Malaial. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Malaial?
I have a question.
Let's start, sure. Go ahead, Commissioner Lambert, and then we'll move on to Commissioner Fonda Benardi.
Thank you for your presentation. You indicated, and I think we all know that substantial changes have been made to the project since the ARB hearing and that you have a lot to do with those changes. I assume you're not happy with all of them, but you want more. But are you relatively satisfied with the project as it stands now?
I think the property. I think the project has improved. I will give the applicant credit, but the applicant started from a very low level. Well, first of all, I would say that he was not compliant after the project, the ARB approved. I would say, like Ross did, the project is probably technically compliant. So for example, landscape coverage is required at 30%. You're right, the applicant said 31%. Before he had one tree, was not compliant. Now he's got two trees. Before he had an undersized trash receptacle, subterranean. No one's going to be bringing up things. Greg Moreno, myself, with staff assistants, we had a conversation with RRR because we have concerns. So yes, it's improved. I think that a couple of things I think could be improved more. I think the wall should be eight feet tall, and I think there should be a real tree screen. Those are two things I think you sitting as ARB, those are landscape and design things that could be asked of the applicant.
Just FYI, there's no way those contractors are going to sell for $2 million.
Well, I think the applicant.
The neighborhood of Central Park is not. Anyway.
I think the applicant will have a very tough pro forma if they don't.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Fonda Benardi.
Yeah, well, thank you for taking this process, which is not easy, all the way through because I think many of us have had the experience of not being heard and particularly with the COVID that's created all this distance between applicants and decision makers. And it's hard to get through that maze. So I do appreciate you coming and testifying. But where we are today is we are the land, basically, we are the ARB. And so our limited profu is quite limited. I wanted to discuss with you the eight-foot-tall wall. And the trade-offs are basically quite simple. As the walls go up, the alley becomes more and more of a, let's call it a no man's land because there's no eyes on the street, no eyes from the first floor level. Let's say you can't see it from the first floor. People on the second floor see, but not from the first floor. It does provide a little bit more privacy, obviously, for the people in the buildings because they don't have to see everybody walking down the alley. But are you sure you want an eight-foot-tall wall along that, along that alley that you're going to look at? Is that, is that really where you're going with this? Right now, the wall on their plans, if I read it correctly, is five feet tall. I think that is quite jumpable by some person trying to get into their property. And, but I think eight feet, are you sure you want that? Is that something that you definitely want to vote for if you had complete control over this project?
If I was sitting in your shoes and knowing what I know, having been here for over a decade and seeing the characters that go down that alley, yes, I would.
Okay, I just, I just.
And I would like the city to actually, alley does need more lighting and things like that and security. That's for sure.
Usually, the best security is eyes, is eyes on the street. And as that wall goes up, the alley becomes nobody's property. So I'm just asking the question. Okay.
And in my opinion, it's being operated as nobody's property now.
No, no.
I'm keeping the applicant's trash cans. I've been actually, you know, making sure it doesn't look like, you know, mess.
Sure. Okay, so are you satisfied with the operation and location of the trash area now?
Yes, I think that it's an improvement to have the trash enclosure upgraded. I'll defer to the RRR department if it's sufficiently sized for three townhomes. You know, I know there's some discretion there. But obviously, before, it's 50 linear feet, and now we've got between the driveway and the trash enclosure, 22 feet is taken up with that.
Okay. Oh, and basically, that event with the driveway starts to squeeze the amount of area that's left for the trees that you seem interested in, which I agree with. I think trees would be helpful. So.
I mean, I know that they've got coastal oak and, you know, I can't say that I'm an arborist, so I can't comment whether that would be the appropriate. But it seems to me a hedge would be better in my belief, but I still, I still don't think two trees is enough buffer.
Okay, well, I hear that. And, you know, wearing our ARB hat, we can talk about the kind of trees that we would want there. And if I were to ask you, do you want a deciduous tree, one that loses its leaves in winter? Or do you want an evergreen there, some tree that has leaves all year? And that could include fruit trees, like orange trees or evergreens. It doesn't have to be conifers. Do you have a preference?
I don't, I will defer to the people on this board for those selections. I put it this way, the one thing is, I assume this developer will sell these units and not maintain the property after he sells them. So probably, hopefully, somebody will, if you're saying it gives off leaves, someone will take care of it.
It's more, it's more how transparent visually it is. Is it a wall of green all year or does it have a seasonal effect? It opens up in the winter, it closes up in the summer. That's more of a.
Yeah, that's a good, okay, that's a good question. I think that something that is not as transparent, given it's a 28-foot tall building. I mean, the building, the two apartment buildings that are there today, I, we don't have a rendering that shows all three of them, unfortunately. But I suspect they're not 28 feet. They're, they're two levels, but I don't think they're the same.
Well, the one part is quite tall, the one to the south is not. I think it's, it's lower, just my eyeball. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fonda Benardi. Anybody else before we move on to the applicant? Okay, let's move on to the applicant. I believe Mr. Wickersham, are you giving the presentation?
Hi, yes, I am. And can you see him?
Yeah. And do you need any more than 15 minutes for your presentation?
Oh, I hope not, but.
Thank you.
And honestly, I think Ross did such a good job of presenting the project and the way that we had actually met the findings for the Architecture Review Board that I don't need to get into a tremendous amount of detail. So I'll give you a broad overview of the project and I think address some of the concerns of Mr. Malaial, and I apologize if I pronounced your name wrong. Because we do, we do take it serious. We do want to be good neighbors. And that is an important part of not just the ethos of our own practice, but also the family that's developing this property. And so we do take it serious and we do want to be responsive to his comments. For those of you that don't know me or have never seen me present at a planning or an ARB hearing, my name is Brian Wickersham. I'm the owner and design director of OX Architecture. We are a 25-person architecture firm located here in the Los Angeles area. We are largely known for doing housing work ranging from very low-income housing all the way up to very high-end luxury housing all throughout the Los Angeles area and Southern California. We've been largely successful because of our focus on design and our focus on working with regulatory agencies and with people. And I think that the findings and the consent approval during the ARB hearing was largely in response to that, that we worked very closely with Ross and city staff to come up with a design that met the requirements of the findings for ARB. And there were some things that came up in the hearing that were addressed in the hearing. For instance, the trash enclosure. And I think that the reason that that wasn't addressed was that, it wasn't that we were trying to do something that wasn't to code. It was, it was because it wasn't really something under the purview of ARB, and that's how it was noted. The issue was brought up. ARB debated whether or not that should make us come off consent. They decided it shouldn't for a very simple reason, that it's something that gets reviewed by the regulatory agencies as we go through the plan check process. And so we'll speak to those things very specifically as I go through the different comments. And I tried to take notes as we went through it. But I wanted to show you really quickly the design and just talk about it conceptually with you because I think, you know, design being subjective, we worked really hard and we're very proud of this project. It is a small job, but it is, we think it does have a big impact on the neighborhood and we want to talk about it from the perspective that we do, which is about delivering really high-quality housing. And I will open up the renderings here just real quick. And now it's decided to not give me my window right on cue. Always a technical difficulty here. And can you see my screen now?
Yes, we can. We just see a blank screen now. I mean, not blank, it just says you're sharing your screen.
Let me know when you can see the rendering or if you aren't able to see it.
No, we still can't see it.
Brian, you might have to drag your window like wherever the rendering is.
Are you able to see it now?
No. Do we have the renderings?
I have their plan set. I'm not sure if there's anything more than they have that they don't.
You know what, Ross? Go ahead. And technical difficulties is part of the video conference work-from-home era, so we'll roll with it. If you could go to, I think, the site plan to start, that would be a good place, showing the landscape area. I think you showed a really beautiful green one earlier. It's so much nicer than this gray one, but we'll roll with it. So if you can go back, this one right there. So, yeah, thanks, Ross. I really appreciate it. As Ross had mentioned, the design is, it's a 5,400-square-foot, three-unit development that's broken into two stories with subterranean parking. As I mentioned earlier, one of the things that's really important to us as we design projects is that they, they deliver not just maximum building footprint and maximum square footage, but they also deliver really high-quality indoor and outdoor spaces. And one of the things that people always respond to in our projects is a really high quality of light because of the windows and providing really high-quality housing, but a really strong inside-outside connection, which is something that is really unique to the, to the Southern California area, that we have an opportunity to open up our spaces and have really high-quality spaces that connect indoors and out. And as such, part of the massing decision here was to shift the masses of the building such that we could get really nice outdoor spaces for each of the units. Two of them to the bottom of the page here. I don't know if Ross could circle them. We have two big yard areas. Yeah, thank you very much. And then we have the one large area to the back. And I know that one of the major concerns here, it seems to be the privacy to the house across the alley. And, and so we do have some outdoor space there. And I think it's important to note that in addition to privacy for the neighbor across the alley, we want privacy for the future people that are going to live in this unit as well. And so while we did only have one tree in that initial submittal, we've added in the two oak trees in the back. The oak tree is primarily because. You know, it's a native. Really nice big canopies that will offer screening over time. The species that are going in, they'll be, you know, 15 or so feet tall when they go in initially. And then the oaks will grow over time. We'll get, you know, I'm not an arborist either, but those canopies will grow substantially. But so in addition to those outdoor spaces and the shifting of the massing, one of the things that we did, and Ross, if you could go to one of the renderings of the front elevation, that would be great. One of the things that we did with the design is that we wanted it to be about a stepping, and if you could go to one of the 3D views, that would be amazing, not the elevational studies. Sorry. Well, that'll do. More of it. So the, the design is really intended to be a series of cuts within a mass in that with those cuts that are made, there's an expression of the change of materials. So we have a really nice vertical siding that's a dark color to the outside. And where those incisions are made, that allows us to get an expression and a change of material and a change of facade. But it also creates a composition of, of cut and push and pull. And we wanted there to be obviously some large windows in that, that dark vertical siding. But we also, in the white masses, had something a little bit more playful. We wanted to have some variation of the facade that didn't feel so flat like the big apartment buildings that everyone hates. It's something that had a little character and a little bit more happening with it. That same stepping and cutting also is happening within the landscape. As you see in the foreground here, we have a series of concrete planters that step at different elevations. Those will be filled with different types of drought-tolerant plants, agaves and grasses. And then we have the black acacia tree to the front here, which again will be a tree that will grow really quickly and will offer some shade and some more character that goes along with the rest of the street. In general, the design of the, of the project not only was something we worked really closely with staff on, but it's something that the ARB unanimously felt was appropriate and of a high quality. The, the one great thing about the, the people on the ARB here in Santa Monica is you have a lot of really talented, really well-known, really respected architects and designers. And unanimously, that group felt that this was not only in compliance with what the ARB looks at, but was a strong example of something that would be great for the neighborhood, but in the fabric that we're trying to achieve here in Santa Monica. And so we can close down the renderings and so we can see face-to-face as we talk. And I'll go through point by point because I want to, and I want to go through each of the points that were made in the, in the earlier presentation, address those one by one, and then hopefully find some ways that we can work with the homeowner across the alley and get something that everyone feels good about and we can move forward with. The first, and so I'll go through sequentially on the items that were in the letter that was addressed. But a couple of key points. The, the family that we're working here on this project with is exactly that. It's a family. It's not an out-of-town developer. It's a family that's been in the West LA area for a very long time that we've worked with on a handful of projects. And literally Scott, who is the, the primary client that we work with, lives just a couple of miles away. And so I say that only to say that this is somebody that came to us not because they were looking for a lowest common denominator architect and designer. They came to us because they were looking to do something nicer. And, and they really wanted to do something not just for financial return, but. but something that was something the family could have a lot of pride in. And that is something that they do care a lot about. And so I just want to make sure that it doesn't come off that this is some large development company. It really is a local family that's developing this and does care about the quality of the things that they're doing. Um, um, the other, just again, going through some of the points that were made. Um, with regard to, to talking to the neighbors, um, Scott has spoken with the neighbors. And I think that the evidence of that is actually in the comments that were provided, uh, in which they're alleging that, uh, Scott said that, um, we're going to save this tree and we're gonna, um, uh, we're gonna do all these things. That was the outreach. Uh, the family has talked to the neighbors on either side. They may not have spoken, um, uh, to the neighbor across the, the alleyway, but there have been conversations that have been had. And it is something that, uh, again, they're, they're neighbors during the, you know, the current state of the house, they're neighbors, uh, during the construction. And then afterwards, you know, they're, they're involved in this project. Uh, and so it's, 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 it's not something that, um, we're trying to just push through without working with people. It really is, um, uh, an effort that we've made to work with the neighborhood. And, and it, it may be that it didn't feel like enough, but I think that Scott did try hard to talk with people. Um, the state of the house, which was something that was brought up. Um, it is in pretty bad disrepair. There is an issue with homeless people there right now. That's the mattresses. That's a lot of other things. Um, the police have been called. Um, that has tried, that's something that they have tried to address and deal with. Um, really the hope is that, um, with the approval tonight, we can move forward with the demolition and get this project underway. And then we don't have, uh, a fenced off vacant home that, uh, the homeless people can get in and, and, and make a mess for the neighbors. Um, uh, and then I think some of the other things, uh, we can touch on as we go through it. Um, I think, um, procedurally, um, in to the point one, uh, about, uh, the ARB was wrongly approving the project. Um, the four points, the four findings that have to be made. Again, ARB unanimously decided in favor of this project. Um, and, and stated, "The plan for the proposed building or structure is expressive of good taste, good design, and in general, and in general contributes to the image of Santa Monica as a place of beauty, creativity, and individuality in, in that the contemporary building is simple and expresses a clear architectural idea." They go on, but I'll spare you that. Uh, finding B, "The proposed building or structure is not of inferior quality such as to cause the nature of the local neighborhood or environment to materially depreciate in appearance and value in the high quality materials such as the dark solid cement boards, anodized aluminum windows, and the board form concrete planters, which will be incorporated into the design as detailed in the application submittal and is presented to the architectural review board." Uh, finding C, "The proposed design of the building or structure is compatible with the developments on land in the general area in the project's design and complementary to the surrounding neighborhood through the use of various design techniques, including use of colors, materials, and building form." Additionally, "The mass and scale takes into consideration the surrounding context with single unit residential units to the rear." Uh, finding D, "The proposed development conforms to the effective guidelines and standards adopted pursuant to Chapter 9.55, the Architectural Review Board, and all other applicable ordinance insofar as the location and appearance of the buildings and structures are involved." And they go on in detail, but I think that the main thing here is that a group of professionals, people that were selected because of their ability to make this determination unanimously supported this. And even when there was the potential to take it off of consent, decided as a group that this was a complete submittal, that we had worked with staff and that this is a project that should not have been controversial.
Thank you. What's your 15 minutes?
Well, I talked a long time. Um, uh, I will answer any questions that I can. Um, and I apologize again for the technical difficulties there at the beginning.
Then Commissioner Reese, then Commissioner Raskin.
I'm just curious. It seemed like you had one more key point you wanted to highlight there.
Well, the, the key point that I'll highlight here, um, in just speaking to one of the main things that came up on that back unit, um, the, working with, uh, staff initially, um, we thought that we could do the, the garbage, uh, subterranean. We've since made the modification in compliance with the, the local codes, uh, for the trash enclosure. Um, we also added in the two oak trees. And we are currently showing, uh, a six foot wall. Uh, I can speak on behalf of, uh, the owner of the property. We'd be happy to go to an eight foot wall because it provides more privacy for, uh, our, you know, future tenants that are going to be there. Uh, but typically eight foot walls are not something that the neighborhood likes. Um, we're happy to do it, but, um, usually six feet is where we cap it because it's the more neighborly thing to do. Um, and I think that was one of the big points is that that's someplace that we can give some ground uh, on the tree cover and that wall. If that's the primary concern, uh, happy to talk about that.
And let me just clarify, when you say give some relief on the tree cover, was that adding the second tree into the back?
Uh, we, we have to, we can get, uh, another tree there off the back. That would be okay. Um, the eight foot wall is okay, but again, that would be something, um, that we have to consider, not just for that neighbor, but for other neighbors, because again, that's not something that typically people really prefer.
Right. Let me, so let me ask. Thank, thank you for responding to that. What about the tree in the front? Is there a movement to, is there an ability to move that to a different tree? Maybe a little bigger species, like maybe the cut, another coastal oak?
I love oaks and, and a coastal oak would be great up there for me. I would love that.
I, I, I'm, okay. I'll make comments about that.
If, if there's one other comment I Oh.
Go ahead.
One other comment I would like
I did have one more question. I apologize. Um, you had mentioned that Scott was there before, during, and would be there after. But as my understanding, this is a subdivision. As a subdivision, isn't, wouldn't the goal be to build this and sell off the units? And then an HOA would run the
Yeah.
Things a bit smoother, uh, for you all, but, uh, I know that specifically for us, uh, specifically on the abutting alley of R2 and R1, uh, you know, tons of trash cans end up in the middle of the alley. Uh, so in order to have the right space, and I believe the RR code is correct. Uh, but in order to make it function well, uh, I think that process needs to be ahead uh, of, of, of your hearing and the ARB. So, uh, thank you again for hearing us. Oh yeah. Happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Yeah. So it's good seeing you again, Greg. Um, there is a question regarding this fence. You're a neighbor. Uh, if you had complete control of this, how high would you make that fence?
You know, I, six feet maybe, you know, what I will tell you is that for the RR, what, and this is part of the fence piece, right? I mean, I actually have a really high fence. My fence is as high as it can go. When we rebuilt our house some odd years ago, we made it as high as we could make it. But I would say that six to eight feet is certainly acceptable. What is very important is that for trash services, that the fence not being closed. Right? I mean, you don't want to have to go out there every Wednesday morning at seven o'clock and open the door so that the trash crush can go in there and pull the trash out. But I'm sure RR has that figured out and you guys will touch that up from a design perspective.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Lambert.
I just, my question's been answered. I, is that really you, Greg? Where did your hair go?
Oh man, this is, this is my COVID cut.
He cleaned up. Wow, I recognize your voice, but you don't look anything like you did. That was my comment.
Okay, I, I apologize. This is my first time chairing the meeting. We should have actually gone to public comments. So thank you applicant and, or sorry, thank you appellate and Mr. Moreno for your presentation and rebuttal. Staff, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No, no worries. As mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we have no comments on any items tonight.
On any items. Okay, well, that, that's why I forgot to do. Okay, thank you. So now let's give three minutes to the applicant.
Can you see me again?
We can, thank you.
All right. Well, first of all, I want to start off by apologizing to Thomas. It was not my intent to imply, and I wasn't trying to imply that you had bent over the sign, just as I'm sure you weren't implying that we installed it in a way you couldn't see it. That was not the intent, so apologies. Please take that as a sincere apology. To the, to the points about the procedure, I think Greg, and he, I think he made some very good points there about how things may be, but it's really important that I reiterate that we worked within the guidelines of the ARB. We worked with staff and we were in compliance with all of the findings that the ARB needed to make. And the fact that we were approved on consent, I think speaks to the fact that we so thoroughly went through this process with staff. To the trash enclosure, that we have made those revisions now and it would have been, that we would have picked up as we went through the plan check process. I would say that I do think the system works pretty well, that we were reviewed design at a large scale first. Design professionals make that decision, people that are very talented and are very good at what they do. And then we work our way through the minutia and the more complicated technical details of structural drainage, trash enclosures and that piece. But we've proceeded in good faith and we will continue to work with city staff and hopefully get a really nice project that everyone in the neighborhood will be, be happy about when it's all done.
Thank you. So before we close the public hearing, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Yeah, just a quick question, Brian. You know, I appreciate the amount of solar collectors you put on the roof of this project. It is more than the average bear we've seen in the past. And just my back of the envelope calculation is that you're about 60% getting to net zero. And I was wondering if you would consider pushing the envelope a little bit. You have the extra room up there and just go for it and really move, move the needle, if you will, for your future budget.
I would love that. And that is something I will talk to the, the property owner about because the sustainability of all of our buildings is really important to me. It's something we really strive for. And if we can get the economics of it to work, we'll certainly do that.
Okay.
So just to follow up on that, Mr. Rikasham, so would you be amenable to a condition that basically say you will, you know, make best efforts or make attempts, you know, if feasible? I, what I, what I think I hear you saying is that you're happy to try to do it, but you don't know that you can absolutely commit to it at this time. Is that correct?
Well, I, there's a big financial impact to that and I can't speak for the owners of the property that they can, they can do that financially. But I certainly know that they care a lot about the environment, knowing them personally. And it's something that we care a lot about in our own practice. So we'll, we'll certainly push for it. To get to net zero is hard. We've worked on a few projects with that aspiration. It is, it's a tough thing to do. But we always strive to do the best we can for the environmental cause for it, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert.
I don't have any questions, so I just wanted to start the discussion.
Okay. So with that, do I need a motion to close the public hearing? Or can I just close the public hearing? No, just, I'm gonna, okay, close the public hearing. Thank you, everyone. So let's go to Commissioner deliberation. Who wants to start? Commissioner Lambert.
Um, I'll start and I'll make a motion at the end of my, my discussion. I strongly support this project. I think I've been looking at the street face of the east side of 20th Street for years. And this will be a giant improvement in the aesthetics of that block. I really do like the project. I think the block will look really wonderful with it. I have a couple of questions of staff. One is because Ellis has brought up the idea of due process of the ARB. The fact that this is a de novo hearing and that we did file due process, I said, in terms of public notice, is that a corrective measure, assuming we even need a corrective measure? Heidi?
Right. So I mean, I think, you know, it's always within your discretion to have discussions about whether or not you think everything happened fairly. You know, you have not received any information from people who did not get notice of either hearing. So that would be something, you know, to consider. And, you know, certainly this is the second hearing. It is de novo. And members of the public were hopefully afforded an opportunity to speak at both.
Thank you. Or comment on both. I also want to send a recommendation, a strong message to the ARB that when they have public comments on a consent item, they pull that item. That's our practice and we have proven tonight that it's a wise practice to follow. I think a lot of time and money could have been saved if they just pulled the consent item when it was before the ARB. They did have public comment, make sure to listen to that comment and address the concerns. So hopefully in the future, they will do that. I support this project. And as I said, I will be willing to make a motion at the end of my discussion. I think that the, the fact that we are facing the Housing Accountability Act and that this project meets all local codes rules any discretion from the standpoint of downsizing the project because it would question feasibility of the project or arguing it all together is not within the realm of possibility. I also, I need to, I just need to say something and I'm going to be as diplomatic as possible. We are looking at a Raina goal of somewhere in the neighborhood of 8,800 units. Projects such as this, I think, should be strongly encouraged, and particularly by R1 property owners. I am an R1 property owner. And I would be very much in favor of seeing R2 develop with multifamily housing versus R1. Because that really is a possibility that's facing R1 people right now. So frankly, if I went R1 adjacent to an R2 property, I would, I would actually support this going to five units. Just to get us closer to Raina and to protect my R1 neighborhood. Three units, obviously, is three fifths of what they could have built. So I, and I just find it kind of interesting, and I don't want to take away from the appellate sincerity in all this, that people who are living in one million, two million dollar houses are having a problem with one or two million dollar condominiums built across the alley. I find that kind of strange, but I don't know. So again, it meets all the code. It is a safe distance from the, safe of, actually an excessive distance from the R1 house across the alley. I believe the landscaping has been brought up to what will help in terms of transition from R2 to R1. So I am willing to make a motion and that motion would be to deny the appeal. Number 20 ENT dash O261 for the property of 2425 20th Street. I so move.
I will second it for the point of discussion.
Okay, so let's move on. Commissioner Fresco.
Um, I, first of all, I just want to know if your motion is to approve the plans that were submitted to us as opposed to the plans that were submitted to the ARB which have us different, an extra.
I'm sorry. It would be the plans that were submitted to us. Yeah. And I also forgot to say that I'm totally opposed to an eight foot long alley. I think it's going to be like a canyon effect. I mean, that alley is not particularly attractive now. It'll be even less so with an eight foot wall, but I would stick with the six foot.
I support a six foot wall. Um, I just, I have a, I just wanted to share a little information with the commission, a little fun fact, little not so fun fact. I just, you know, I like to go there. And this block, um, Track Six, Track Six Three Three O was established in 1923 as an oil prospecting subdivision, which the, the subdivider thought it was going to be the next Signal Hill. And all of the people who bought parcels would have a share in the oil if it were found. And an oil derrick was in fact erected and they dug down very deep. I forget, maybe a thousand or more feet. Didn't find much. But the derrick was across the street in the house next to the parking lot of the church towards the end of the block. It was really there. I saw a picture of it. It's crazy. It went down and 1938 came around and of the 488 parcels, there were 450 owners and they all got together as a group, all of their signatures to re-record all of their deeds to have Caucasian only restrictions added to their deeds. And those restrictions, which were recorded in 1938, were to expire in 1962. So this subdivision has a pretty interesting and dark and colorful background that I thought you all should know about. And that said, I think this is a great project, although I do really wish that there were fewer three unit projects and more four unit projects that included an affordable unit.
If I may make one procedural clarification, you will be ruling on both the appeal and whether or not to approve the project. So just to make clear in your, in any motion, or if you do them as two separate motions, if you are moving to deny the appeal, you would also be moving to approve, to approve the design.
Did I incorporate that in my motion?
Sure, if you would, if you'd like.
What?
You didn't, you need to restate it.
You need to restate the motion.
Okay, I, I move that we approve the project as presented to us tonight at 2420 20th Street.
And deny.
What?
And deny.
No, I'm getting there. And that we deny the appeal of the ARB decision for, which is number 20 ENT dash O261.
Is there a second?
Continue the second.
Okay. Who, does anyone else have comments? Commissioner Reese, then Commissioner Raskin, then Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Okay, um, okay, the first response, I'm going to go back to Commissioner Raskin. Early in the meeting, you asked if I had a memory of why we created that law. I don't really. I'll be happy to go back and see if I like it, but I believe, or not I like it, but I remember, but I believe what Mari, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi said is really the meat of why that decision was made. I also want to say, Commissioner Raskin, you're absolutely right. We were, I was looking at the wrong photo. And the photo I looked at where we had the sign right in the front was for this hearing. There was something funky about the photo that they did for the other project, but I'm, so I think there, maybe there was a noticing, but I feel more comfortable now. We've noticed a new hearing. We have perfected the notices. I also think, even if the other notice was imperfect, the appellate knew about it and the neighbors knew about it. So the notice was getting out there. So I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with that, although I do acknowledge that the photos that were shown were improper. I think the fact that these guys are planting oak trees on their project site is really significant and unique. Oak trees are protected trees. Once they put them in there, it's hard to move them. And I don't, a lot of people who, who go and say, hey, we want to do this. We want to put an oak tree on your property. So I am really supportive of the design of this project, but I'm really supportive of that small aspect. And also a quick Google search tells me that a coastal oak can crown at 80 feet. So we're not going to have a, a coverage problem with the two trees back there. Now, I would love to see a bigger tree in the front yard, like another oak, if, if the commission thought that was appropriate. I think it's appropriate just because there was a big tree out there before. And there's a lot of value in big trees. We all know that. I think as a commission, we have a focus that we want to protect these trees in the city. But the codes don't allow us to do it. And if we're really serious about this, we have to take a, a page out of Nina and the, and the Conservancy's book and say, look, if we want to protect trees, we got to change the code so that people can make design modifications and ask for variances or adjustments based on that. That way we might see some of these trees protected in the future. Um, I do not, I don't really have a dog in the hunt about the eight foot tall wall. I have a 20 foot wide alley. I have a, a wall at eight feet. It's not a canyon to me, but I can go either way with the commission on that. And with that, those are in my comments. I, again, do really like the design of the project and certainly we would be better off if we had five units there than one, but that's the way our code's working right now. We need to understand it. People are not going to go the extra mile unless they have to.
Um, so Commissioner Reese, are you asking the maker of the motion to amend the motion to include a oak tree in the front?
I guess I would if I can see that other commissioners are supportive of that idea.
Well, I, I would accept that if it were physically possible, given the subterranean apartment.
Okay, Commissioner Raskin.
Thank you. And yeah, Commissioner Reese, I, I wholeheartedly agree with the point about supporting people putting oak trees on their property. You know, and, and yeah, we, we absolutely do need, need some sort of holistic reform with respect to how we regulate trees and this property, on property citywide. You know, I had a discussion with Mr. Dordo, who's the Urban Forest Supervisor for the City of Santa Monica. And I asked him, how many immature trees would you need to plant in order to match the value of a 30 inch cedar that was taken out? And the answer is you would need 29 24 inch box trees to match the ecological value of that tree. Now, obviously you can't put that in on this property, but there are other places in the city, in, in public parkways and other public places where you can put in those replacement trees and capture some of the same value. So all, all that being said, we really desperately need to get some, some legislative reform with respect to how we're regulating trees here. And, you know, really, I guess to, to the point of things, I, I do have serious doubts with respect to whether this, this, this project does comply with the, the building code. And I think that there's a lot of logic to what Commissioner Reese and Commissioner Fonda already said with respect to phrasing, you know, a law that's based on a hypothetical ground floor area. But the fact of the matter is that, that the general plan says in a black lettered law that upper floor setbacks along neighborhood streets are required. And I don't think that an interpretation of the building code based on a hypothetical ground floor area is reconcilable with the general plan provision. So I, I, I have serious concerns about that. And for, for that reason, I, you know, I, I really just struggled to find the project compliant with that particular code provision. I, I do want to just say for the record, I completely agree with what Commissioner Lambert and Fresco said about incentivizing use of properties in a way that maximizes their value, especially if we can get affordably units out of it. And with that, I'll, I'll end my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Raskin. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi? You're unmute.
Great about that. I, I would like to move the question. I think we've, we've closed in on a decision and we could move ahead.
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to make two quick comments. Thank you. Um, one was that with regards to what Commissioner Lambert said on consent, I think that's good practice, but I think it's important for us to recognize and just state on the record that what they, what the ARB did at the time that they did it was compliant with the law. And then also to reiterate that what we are doing here tonight, acting in a de novo capacity, I don't think there was any notice deficiencies. I don't think there was any due process deficiencies. It seems to me the fact that we did not get a bunch of comments saying
I don't think there was any due process deficiencies. It seems to me the fact that we did not get a bunch of comments saying, wait, I didn't know about this, right? That suggests that there wasn't an issue. It seems to me like this is just something that's being brought up to to try to undermine the project. And I would, I think this is a great project. I would vote for this regardless of our RENA allocation. I think that it has done a really nice job of fitting into the neighborhood and does enhance and is consistent with the area. And I think we can make all of the findings, and I think that the written findings that were adopted at the ARB really show how we can make those findings. In terms of consistency, you know, I, I think we have to look at the code as it is written and consistency is somewhat of a, you know, even if you could deem that we were inconsistent with a single policy or a single statement in the general plan, that doesn't make the entire project inconsistent. And I think here, and if you look at the project as a whole, it is it is consistent with our codes and our policies. And with that, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi, did you have something?
Yeah, just clarification. Leslie, did your motion include the six foot fence?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then, so with that, I think we can call the question.
So just to clarify, this is the yes, it's the denial of the appeal and approve the ARB application, and then it's with to add a condition about the six foot fence in the rear? And was that, what was the coastal, the changing the tree in the front to a coastal oak, was that part of the motion as well or not?
I don't think.
Was that, that in the plans that were submitted to us? I didn't look at the tree type.
No, there's a different tree. It's an acacia, I think.
Acacia?
Acacia, thank you. Well, is there some issue about whether the roots can, can we say, you know, replace the acacia with a oak if?
Yeah, if feasible.
If feasible, you know, based on the root structure or something.
But the ones in the rear are oaks, right?
Those are oaks. Yes, they're already there.
Okay, so there'll be a condition added that is to change the tree species in the front yard to a coastal oak if
If feasible.
With the subterranean parking, okay, if feasible. We'll leave it at that. Just trying to make sure we have a good stoa here. And there is one small typo. I just want to show the commission. It's on page two of the stoa. We just looked at under planning commission action. There's an extra number. It says appeal 20 ENT dash 02561. It should be 0261. So we're crossing out the extra number five in there. That was just a small typo.
Thank you for catching that.
Okay, so with that, let's call the vote. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And vice chair pastor.
Yes. I want to remind everyone that this is, this not the appeals to the council, so this is a final action.
You also still need to vote on the stoa as amended?
Yes. Let us vote on the stoa as amended.
We'll move.
A roll call vote.
Commissioner Fresco, seconded by Commissioner Lambert?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And vice chair pastor.
Yes. And I will remind you again, this is a final action. It cannot be appealed to council. Okay, so with that, I believe we have moved on to 13, which is adjournment. Unless, oh.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to all the commissioners. Much appreciated debate and the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Rikasham.
Get those mattresses out of the backyard.
What was that?
Get those mattresses out of the backyard.
I will make a call in about one minute.
Thank you to the, yeah, thank you and thank you to the appellant for the time that he put in.
Yes.
For his appeal. Okay, so moving on to item 13, shall we adjourn?
Yeah.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Good job, Alisa.
I'll get it. Thank you, staff. Bye bye.
Bye.